February 13th, 2018, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Before we go any farther, I would like to introduce Elena Martinez Lopez, who is our Administrative Assistant Training in Ms. Flock Ketter's position, who will be retiring in May. So Elena, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Meyer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. Mark Biennello, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, please come forward and introduce our students, who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Meyer, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Flock Ketter. Yes, it is my honor and privilege tonight to introduce Mrs. Miranda Underwood. Miranda is from Lake Weir High School, the FFA chapter there. And leading us in the pledge tonight will be Ty Hicks. Ty is from Bellevue Middle School and the FFA chapter there. But before you hear from Miranda and Ty, we did bring some props. As you know, next week is the Southeastern Youth Fair, so we certainly want to invite the board and our community to come to that event. It is a wonderful event. My first prop is really not a prop, it's Loretta Young. So I'm going to invite Loretta Young. Loretta is our... Ta-da! Loretta is our district administrator. She's our assistant principal. She is absolutely wonderful. She's my right arm. She's many people's right arm. And as much time as I'm up here, I thought, we have to get Loretta. She didn't want airtime, but I think Loretta needs some airtime. So here is Loretta Young. Please put the face with the name. Okay, let's see. We have Abby Kimball. Abby, Abby is from Marion Oaks Elementary.
Yay, with the chicken!
Next, we have Sutton Mihafi, from North Marion Middle. Come on up, Sutton. And last but not least, we have Ashley Hamilton. Ashley is from Vanguard High School.
With the goat.
So ladies, if you could please just tell us your animal's name and what event you will be participating in next week.
My... My chicken Pearl and, uh, uh, my bunny Spot. And I made arts and crafts at home.
Abby, very good, and best of luck to you and your chicken next week. Sutton?
My rabbit's name is Oreo, and I'll be doing showmanship, skillathon, and ag ventures.
Best of luck to you, Abby, and Sutton.
Um, this is my goat. Her name's Lola. I'll be participating in the Junior Dairy Goat Show. If you've got this picture.
And you're Ashley, not Sutton. Sorry about that, Ashley. Okay, now we have Miranda to lead us in the inspirational.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board Members, Superintendent, and guests. My name is Miranda Underwood. I'm 17 years old and proud to serve as the President of Lake Weir High School Senior FFA Chapter. Next week, I will take my sixth and final trip into the show ring as an exhibitor at the Southeastern Youth Fair. Sad about that. Many people think of the fair in terms of its two largest events, steer and swine. But did you know that during a single week in February, there are dozens of competitive events? From speech contests and cover design, photography, poultry, horticulture, tractor driving, goat, rabbit, and dog events, and so much more. The fair has an event to pique the interest of every student in Marion County. It is no wonder that for over 1,000 4H and FFA members, the Southeastern Youth... or, the third week of February is the best week of the entire year. The Southeastern Youth Fair as we know it has been operating since 1978. Its mission statement is to recognize the outstanding youth of Marion County through the Southeastern Youth Fair as a showcase for competition, exhibition, enhanced educational opportunities, and the promotion of self-esteem, personal growth, and development while aiding in the education of citizens of Marion County regarding the importance of agriculture and related industries in our area. If you are lucky enough to know a few exhibitors, you know that they are fulfilling this mission. Participants in the Southeastern Youth Fair work all year for an opportunity to showcase their talents. A few come home with blue ribbons or covered in trophies and belt buckles, but many do not see this kind of reward, do not feel sorry, though. We all come away, excuse me, with valuable life lessons, lasting friendships, and a greater preparation for life beyond high school. Participating in the Southeastern Youth Fair provides exhibitors with significant character-building attributes. Their tough competition teaches students to be humble champions and graceful losers. FFA and 4H members know that the only path to the show ring starts before the sun rises and ends long after it is gone. Preparing for the show requires blood, sweat, tears, and multiple changes of clothes. Fellow exhibitors are always there to lend a hand or offer advice, even in the midst of competition. Unlikely friendships are developed as competitors are faced with challenges that only this special group can understand. There are also volunteer opportunities for students. Ambassadors help the fair run smoothly from day to day while others assist with ag ventures. From February 21st through the 23rd, over 1,000 second grade students from our school will have a firsthand look at Florida's major agriculture commodities during the Marion County Farm Bureau Ag Venture Program. Students and teachers will explore interactive exhibits and attend hands-on workshop as part of this event and tour. I know that some of you are planning on volunteering your time, and I hope to see you at the fair. The fair also teaches strong business skills. Nowhere else will you meet a group of students who understand so well that there is power in direct eye contact, firm handshakes, and an even tone of voice. Recruiting Buyers teaches that confidence is truly key to getting what you want and that a handwritten letter goes a long way. Southeastern Youth Fair exhibitors can write a budget which includes enough money for next year's projects and track expenses like pros. We come to understand that business is not just about earning money, but investing in ourselves and others. The fair sponsors continue to show us that it's often what you can do for others, not just what you can gain. Most of all, the fair teaches that having courage is a fundamental part of life. Competitors are pushed through terrible and successful show years. Students who are participating now will be Marion County's leaders in a few short years. Relax, we are well on our way to being ready for this task. I would like to invite each of you to join us at the Southeastern Youth Fair, February 16th through the 24th. I promise that you will be amazed and uplifted at what you witness. Thank you.
That was awesome.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the girls, will they just turn around and face the board? I'm sure they want to have words for you.
Absolutely. I will start. I'm so excited. I love the Southeastern Youth Fair and the leadership skills and the discipline that it teaches is just remarkable. So good luck to all of you, and I look forward to seeing you at the fair.
Thank you, too. And I want to say to Ty, thank you for the pictures that you sent over, too. Thank you all, okay?
I just want to say, hey, been around, and I really enjoy my opportunities to come out to the youth fair. And I want to say, especially next to the people that participate with the 4H clubs, because we have so many that are not associated with our schools officially, but the kids belong to us, and I just want to say, congratulations on the job well done.
Stacy?
I'll keep it quick. I know that this lamb is ready to go, and this little goat's ready to go. But I want to thank all of y'all for participating, and animals are just precious, and thank you so much. Nothing better to build character than taking care of animals.
Yeah, I just want to say, you guys are amazing. Whenever you guys come before us, I'm just always amazed at the confidence and poise that you guys, poise that you guys always display. And I wish Lola, Oreo, and Pearl the best of luck in your competitions, and I look forward to seeing you guys next week.
I'd like Mom and Dad to stand, if you're in the audience, please. The parents of these fabulous students. I know that raising these animals is a family adventure, and so thank you for your commitment to this, because it's a wonderful opportunity for your kids. Thank you. Good luck. We'll see you at the fair.
You guys are awesome.
Hold on, the comb, maybe? The comb on that side?
My granddaughter's chickens got caught by the dog, but they were pulled on a walk.
Ready?
Okay. I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 13th, 2018, School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Seconded by Ms. Kelly.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December 12th, 2017, School Board Meeting? Moved by Ms. Kelly.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the January 4th, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Mr. James. There's no additions or corrections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jody Phillips, Program Specialist, Curriculum and Instruction, please come forward and introduce those who are here for special recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Flock Ketter, Mr. Gibbs. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to recognize Vanguard High School and in a longstanding athletic event that has been associated with Marion County Public Schools. And at this time, I would like to bring forward a Principal of Vanguard High School, Mr. Troy Sanford.
Good evening, everybody. Chairman McCall, Superintendent Meyer, our board members, thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you about the Kingdom of the Sun Tournament. The Kingdom is a longstanding tradition, as Mr. Phillips had shared, and it's an amazing basketball tournament that takes place right after the Christmas holidays. I want to bring up one of our coaches here in a second, our head coach, but I want to thank our board members who did have an opportunity to attend. I also want to thank Dr. Meyer. It was a unique opportunity at one of the games, as Leon Rogers, the first Principal of Vanguard High School, was there and past Superintendent, and it was wonderful to see the interaction between our current Superintendent and a past Superintendent. So what a great opportunity. But I want to thank Phillip Small, our head coach for the basketball team. It takes a lot of time and commitment to put together a 16-team tournament, the organization, the structure of the tournament, and I want to thank you for taking that opportunity and presenting Vanguard with such a great light. So please come on up, Phillip.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Sanford, Mr. Phillips, Board Members, Dr. Meyer. Great to be here, great to see all you guys who were able to make it to the tournament. Like he said, it's a ton of work. We just finished our 44th year of the Kingdom of the Sun, started by Coach Haley in 1974 with a great vision, with Mr. Rogers as well. And it's just a wonderful Ocala treasure, I think. And the last few years, we've worked extremely hard. As you guys know, money is not just lying around for youth sports, especially these days. So we've had some great support within the community. It is an event that the Ocala basketball community supports extremely well. Those of you that are able to make it out and see the amount of people we had in the seats, I had scouts that bounce around to a lot of tournaments, and they say, I'll go to a tournament, and there'll be 10 people in the stands. This is really something special. Everybody runs tournaments now, but ours is just special and a mainstay, and I see people throughout the community all year long that want to know about it, who's coming, and where are they from, and what kind of team we're going to have, and this, that, and the other. There are several people that I would like to thank, in addition to the board, that just kind of support our tournament and deserve some recognition. Legacy Team Sales is our presenting sponsor, they do a lot for us. The City of Ocala, the Marion County Visitors and Conventions Bureau, the Ocala Hilton, Chaney Brothers, Ocala Housing Authority, Triple Crown Trailers, ocalaforsale.com, Brick City Interactive, Pizza Hut of Marion County, Mojo Grill and Catering Company, Zaxby's, Locographics, and of course, Ocala Star Banner and Gainesville TV 20. Again, thank you guys for having us here. You know, I work camps and clinics across the country all summer long, or I go to the Final Four for the NCAA Tournament, and I run into coaches, and they say, oh, where are you from? I'm from Ocala and Vanguard High School. Oh, yeah, Kingdom of the Sun. I mean, college coaches and people all across the country know what we do, and it's just great to be a part of something forward, and I hope we can keep it going. I want to make sure we have a great one at 50 in six years, so I'm already kind of got the wheels turning there, and I just pray for your continued support. Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah, it's always a pleasure to talk about basketball, and especially when I look at something that's a treasure. And again, I want to commend you for that. But I also have a question. How do you determine what other local teams get into the tournament?
Well, since I've been around and had some say in it, for me, it is... We've had almost every Marion County school in the tournament. For us, it's such a high-level competitive tournament. For me, I would like to pick the best team in Ocala, or what I think will be the best team in Ocala, the following year. Since I've been here, we've had Forest, North Marion multiple times, Lake Weir multiple times, Danellin multiple times. Next year, Westport's already committed. Obviously, we're in there, and so we've had Trinity Catholic. But, you know, we've had almost every Marion County Public School, and so I want to continue that. I think it's important for the students in Marion County to get the recognition that, you know, our kids get every year, they get the benefit of playing in that and playing in front of, you know, a lot of fans and a lot of college scouts.
You know, so do you take in consideration the skill of the team or what their records are? Is that taken into place?
Yeah, I think for me, when I look at any team, Mr. James, from anybody, the tournament works best if there's a one or more college players on each team, college prospects on each team. That draws college scouts, it sells tickets, it brings people in the seats, it also, you know, it improves the level of play. So that absolutely has something to do with the level of skill, not their record the year before, because I've already got six teams committed. I had six teams committed by the middle of January for this coming year, so I don't know how they're going to finish this season. But I just look at skill level, program history, and what their outlook is for next year.
Okay.
Ms. Stacy?
I've always been so supportive of the coaches getting their stipends and their extra money, and I have fought and fought for that. And I have not been real successful, but I fought every round of budgets. I ask for that. And it's gotten a little more and a little more. But the amount we give you, you make $1.98 an hour for the time you put in. I don't know very many people that work for $1.98. So when parents or anyone's complaining about anything we're not doing right with our sports teams, I tell you, then they need to come out and help, and they'll see how much work it was. My husband coached for many, many years in several of the high schools, Trinity Catholic, at night. And it's just a blessing to you, but still, you're away from your family, and those takeout dinners that you have to bring in aren't free. So thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Coach Small, thank you. You know how I feel about basketball. And for many years, attended Kingdom of the Sun, really enjoyed being there this year, and know that my son, when he was coaching at Florida, was a scout many times on that bench. Maybe he'll be back again someday, so thank you so, so much. It is a treasure, and it's one of those things that people look forward to during the holidays. So thank you. Thank you to Troy. Thank you.
And I wanted, yeah, I wanted to thank you as well, because I don't... I'm learning basketball. Thank you to you and Dr. Hamm for guiding me through that. So I'm watching your interaction, though, with your players and what leadership and professionalism and the encouragement that you were giving them. It was so positive. And I know they struggled during that one game, but you continue to just reinforce with such positive words and encouragement, and that, as a mom and as your superintendent, was awesome. Thank you. And then one of your players, I taught him kindergarten. So that was... Oh, my gosh, I was his kindergarten teacher. So that was so awesome to see him out there and to see him doing well. So thank you for being a mentor to those young men as well. That's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Small. Mr. Joe McGowan, Director of School Counseling and Assessment, please introduce those here for district recognition.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, Chairwoman McCall, Board Members, Ms. Flock Ketter, and Mr. Gibbs. I have the distinct privilege and honor to present to you for recognition tonight, our local assessment and data team. Under the leadership and vision of Doctors Meyer and Grantham, through their transition into the district, our local assessment team, which is previously under Curriculum and Instruction, was joined together with our state assessment team. So for a little more than a year now, I've had the... my true privilege to work day to day with these individuals, and I just come to you to recognize them for their recognition through one of the programs that they work with. This team provides leadership, training, support for numerous programs, including iReady and Unifi, our local assessments, and many other student data-related projects. One of the programs that they oversee and work with is Unifi. And Unifi is one of the programs underneath Performance Matters. So Performance Matters has True North Logic, which is our employee data housing system, and Unifi is our student data management system. And so this group of individuals oversee that program, and what it does essentially is it utilizes all student data in our district, and it puts it together in a convenient, accurate manner, and it's demographics, it's assessment results, it's attendance behavior, and it's where all of our student data is housed. So no matter what it is, it all goes into this one program. And this team oversees that and works with our schools to utilize Unifi for their benefit. One of the aspects of that, working with Unifi, is monthly user calls, which are called Florida Users Group Conference Calls. And over each month, Unifi selects one district throughout the state as what they call their highlighted district. And then they ask that district to share what they're doing and how they're utilizing Unifi to share with districts across the state so that they can replicate it and learn best practices. I'll just run through a couple of examples of how the team utilized Unifi up till the December call, when they were the highlighted district throughout the state. They use the data in Unifi to help schools estimate school grades at the end of last school year, prior to the school grades released. They complete data digs with the school leadership teams after FSA results were out, so they use the Unifi tool to help schools plan for instruction for 1718. They use Unifi after Survey 2 to create watch lists, so to help schools identify their most at-risk targeted students, so they could work with those students and improve instruction. After our fall assessments, they worked with regional groups of assistant principals using Unifi to look at that data and through student item analysis to figure out how they could address those needs of the students. And finally, through our quarterly assessments, they use Unifi to create assessment data videos, which our team, along with Program Specialists from Curriculum and Instruction, created videos to work with schools and to show them each test broken down by the student item analysis. So it's a dynamic tool, but it's a tool, and it cannot be done without the knowledge and the expertise and the professionalism of these folks. So let me go ahead and introduce them. We have Coordinator Chris Sandy. Chris, go ahead and stand for me, please. Program Specialist Beth Lazar, and Chris Lyon, and Clerk Specialist Kathy Temperman and Jenny Goodson. So I just want to ask you for their recognition of their hard work. They've been identified throughout the state as best practices using this program. But again, Unifi is a tool. It's one of many tools, but it cannot be done without the hard work and dedication of these individuals. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Ready? Ms. Stacy?
I'd like to say thank you. I run into Ms. Sandy all kind of over the place, and the most unexpected places sometimes, and it's always where there's kids. And no matter what time of the day it is, it's where there's kids. Late in the afternoon, and I just hope she lives forever. Take your vitamins, Ms. Sandy. Take your vitamins. Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say something, too. I just... this team you have together, they're wonderful. And just even out right before this board meeting, I had Ms. Sandy and Ms. Chris Lyons, they stopped me about some things that we have coming up in the future, that they know their stuff, and they have great ideas, and I look forward to seeing you guys next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much for all you do for our kids. Thank you.
And I've never called Ms. Fields, and I didn't get, like, the most super answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gay Street, Principal of Spar Elementary, please come forward for recognition of a very special donation.
Chris Sandy is such an amazing person. Madam Secretary, Madam Chair, Distinguished Board Members, and Dr. Heidi Meyer, Superintendent of Schools, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you today and to honor a business that has generously donated $5,000 to Spar Elementary, and that is Midstate Skin Institute, Dr. and Mr. Coffin. Unfortunately, this afternoon, she had an emergency, and she could not be here. However, we did have a conversation. She said, Ms. Street, I do not need this type of recognition. And I said, oh, but you do. And the reason why is because not many times do we get businesses to sponsor a school, and they did. And so we are most appreciative, and I just wanted to say publicly, thank you, Dr. and Mrs. Coffin, for your donation to Spar Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Street. And thank you, Mr. and Mrs....
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Dama Absher, Director of Alternative Learning, please come forward and introduce those here to recognize February 5th through 9th, 2018, as Student Services Week.
Good evening, Superintendent, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Gibbs. As everyone kind of joins me around the podium, I'll go ahead and get started. Yes, please. Okay. Last week was Student Services Week, and that's a week that we can recognize the different professionals that are part of student services. And typically, I'll get into who those professionals are. Behind me, you will find different directors who oversee departments within student services. I'm Dama Absher overseeing alternative learning. Liz Fields oversees the exceptional student education department. Liz Fields oversees the Exceptional Student Education Department. We have Juan Lopez overseeing Psychological and Social Work Services. John McGowan, who you have heard from this evening, overseeing School Counseling and Assessment. His Program Specialist Amanda Steckman, and then I'll introduce you to a few folks from my department, but we'll be brief, but wanted to kind of recognize the different professions within Student Services. I may need your assistance in proceeding. The professions within Student Services are school nurses, school psychologists, school social workers, and school counseling. So those are technically the professions that fall within the umbrella of Student Services. Here in Marion County, in addition to those professions, we also include alternative learning, as well as the Exceptional Student Education Departments within Student Services. And really, the mission and what we do within our fields is to provide comprehensive support services, and our goal is really to keep students in school, engaged in school, and to help their families to continue to have their students in school and engaged in learning. Within the Alternative Learning Department, we oversee several district frameworks and initiatives and projects, if you will, and so these are some of the different big things that fall under the department within Alternative Learning, and those would be positive behavior interventions and supports, the framework of multi-tiered systems of support, the interconnected systems framework, which I've got a lot of acronyms there, and that's really connecting positive behaviors, mental health, social-emotional learning, those types of frameworks. We also oversee Section 504, which really is, helps many of our students, and I'll introduce you to our coordinator in a moment. We oversee School Health Services and the Code of Student Conduct, as you're familiar with our work there, student discipline, bullying prevention, and then we also oversee the Positive Alternatives to School Suspension Program, which is a district and school suspension program as an alternative to out-of-school suspension. We oversee alternative placements. We oversee a couple of diversion programs within our department, and also expulsions with services. And then if you think of kind of another part of Alternative Learning, you also may be familiar with some of our educational programs that are available. Thank you. And that would be educational programming for students who are detained at our detention center, they're incarcerated in our jail. We serve both the adults and the juveniles. And we also have a residential facility, Marion Youth Academy. We are also the liaison between the school district and some of our contracted sites, and that includes New Leaf Center, Pace Center for Girls, Silver River Mentoring and Instruction, and those are really the locations where they serve a lot of our at-risk students who need maybe some corrective action in lieu of being out of school. And we also have Marion eLearning, which is a wonderful virtual opportunity for students in kindergarten through fifth grade. We have Marion Virtual School, Home Education, and our Young Parent Program. And what I'm going to highlight very briefly is Health Services, because school nursing falls under that umbrella of Student Services Professionals. Just to let you know, we have a team of twenty-one registered nurses, five Health Services Technicians, three Health Services Workers. We have school nurses at our schools, and then we also have basic nurses who train and supervise our unlicensed assistive personnel across forty-eight school campuses. We've got health clinic assistants, and we also oversee the implementation of our Health Services Plan. All of this work is done in conjunction with and with an agreement with the Department of Health, and so we do have that partnership with them to provide these services, and many of these personnel are folks that work for the Health Department, and we collaborate with them. And some of the Health Services that we provide within our school system are listed here, and you can see that it really, a lot of the things that we're familiar with might be immunizations and developmental screenings. We oversee some of the work with ensuring that students have access to dental screenings and sealants, and so really, it's all about promoting healthy behaviors, as we know, or help these students, and that's how we keep students in school. And before we move on to Exceptional Student Education, I'll just introduce you to some of the folks that are here this evening. I have with me Lori Lynn Bowie. She's a coordinator in our department, if she'll step up and be recognized. And she oversees our Young Parent Program, students with Section 504 plans, and also the PAST Program for students in lieu of an out-of-school suspension. We also have Andrea Simmons with us. She is, come on up, a registered nurse, and she oversees Health Services for the school system, and we're very honored to have her. This is our first time having a nurse in the position of Program Specialist for Health Services, so it's very exciting. She's also very health-conscious and was concerned about our live animals here this evening, so she's always at work twenty-four seven. We also have with us tonight Darren Vitale. If she'll step up, and this is a Program Specialist in our department as well, and helps oversee a lot of our work with students. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, Madam Chair, Superintendent. We're going to talk a little bit about the Exceptional Student Education Department. What is Exceptional Student Education? Well, it starts with specially-designed instruction for our students with disabilities, and goes all the way through to instruction for our gifted students and gifted education, but a big chunk of what we do is with related service providers, so occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, interpreters. We have people that teach our students who are vision impaired. We also have student, people on our staff that are behavior analysts, and they're internationally certified, and we have people that provide counseling and special transportation. So I think a lot of times, people don't know what occupational therapists and physical therapists do, and they have some very unique things that they do in their jobs. Occupational therapists work with students on grip and writing. They help us adapt books. We have students that can't turn pages of books, and so they help us adapt books so that students can do that. They help students self-regulate by providing sensory opportunities that might be getting in a body sock or playing with a fidget, and then they also help with basic classroom things like cutting, putting puzzles together, and even opening snack and drink containers in the cafeteria. Our physical therapists help students build core strength, and they help students to get around campus. We actually have physical therapists that are teaching students to walk, to stand, to sit in chairs. Our speech-language pathologists work with children who stutter. They help students build vocabulary. They help students with listening comprehension skills. They help students to build auditory processing skills. Our interpreters, they're people that speak another language. I mean, sign language is essentially a foreign language, so they have a really unique skill set there, and they help children build understanding of deaf culture. We also have ESE specialists, who are school-based experts, that help teachers with developments of individual education plans, and they help parents understand the process. We have Program Specialists who are experts in all different areas, autism, other health impairments, specific learning disabilities, and then we have a large staff of office clerks and bookkeepers and secretaries that help with state reporting data, which is important for our funding, and making appointments and taking phone calls from parents. So that is who helps support us in the Exceptional Student Education Department. Now we're going to go on to Psychological and Social Work Services.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Mayer, members of the Board. It is great satisfaction for me to take this opportunity to introduce to you some of a range of services that we provide in Psychological and Social Work Services, and also to talk a little bit about the professionals that provide those services. We are a team of about maybe fifty professionals, combining school psychologists, social workers, and also part professionals, and we provide a wide range of services. Some of them direct services, like psychoeducational evaluation. We work very closely with the rest of the Student Services Team, but our main goal is to be doing diagnosis and to provide recommendations in terms of what needs are identified for children, help develop individual education plans to address any possible need identified, also provide support for district-wide initiatives, especially our social work professionals that are really highly specialized in the attendance initiative that the district roll out. We are really providing support to school in terms of improving attendance at school, and also provides information, not just to professionals in the field, but also to parents and to the community at large, and especially to students in terms of support services. Now, who are the school psychologists? Now, we are highly-trained professionals, probably one of the most highly-trained group of professionals in the school system. It is a minimum requirement to be a school psychologist to have a specialist degree, which is about, you know, between the doctorate level and the master level, so that's a minimum requirement, and it requires a very sophisticated level of training. Social workers, most of our social workers are licensed and certified social workers, which are really very capable of providing a wide range of services in clinical areas. Our goal is to really kind of, we say, to, you know, help students teach and students learn by eliminating barriers that prevent them from engaging in a productive learning environment or in a productive teaching environment. We serve a wide range of population. While we work in partnership with our Student Services Team, we also provide individual services to parents in terms of consultation, any clinical questions or questions about behavior, or how kids learn, developmental issues, mental health issues. We try to create supportive learning environment in the school by working in school climate, by helping teachers how to set up, how to interact, and taking into account emotional development and social-emotional learning as a way of creating a learning environment where students can maximize their potential. We provide specific services to students, and in that sense, we also part of the, you know, the diversion program. We coordinate with Alternative Learning and also with counseling to provide a continuum of services in which we play different roles. You know, and our particular role is to provide skill development, also provide social-emotional skills to students that may not have been and might be making poor choices in the school and interfering with their learning or with the learning environment. We provide direct services to them, and we also try to promote mental wellness by teaching kids how to socialize, how to participate productively with their peers, how to eliminate conflicts, how to problem solve, and also equipping them not only with the reading and writing, but also with the emotional skills that will allow them to be effective citizens. These are the specific areas, and we promote academic achievement, which is actually our main reason why we exist. The only purpose of eliminating barriers is so we can impact the bottom line, which is equipping kids with the ability to be successful, not just academically, but also socially and emotionally. Promote positive behavior, not just in school, but also in the society at large. Support diverse learners. We believe that every student has the potential to learn. We just have to identify what the needs are, what we need to meet them, what barriers we need to eliminate in order to facilitate their learning. Creating a school climate is a very important thing, and we are really kind of trying to work harder on that. How do we use the knowledge we have in terms of, you know, social-emotional skill to facilitate an environment that creates appropriate context for students to thrive. Connecting family and communities with resources, assessment, evaluation, and crisis preparedness, response, and recovery. That is a very important thing, which we have put a lot of work into. Unfortunately, we have been very busy recently here in Marion County, but we are very happy that we have a team of highly-trained professionals that can provide support to students and to schools and the community in a case of a crisis event, and we have been using those resources very extensively, unfortunately, recently. What training do we receive? I was saying that we are probably one of the most highly-trained staff in the school, and this is some of the training we receive. We not only learn to be, interpret data and collect data to use and analyze them to help school develop effective instructional and behavioral management strategy, but we also do direct assessment collectively and also individual assessment, school-wide practices to promote learning, and that has to do with the school climate, mental health interventions, which is a continuum of mental interventions from the preventive piece in terms of promoting good learning environment, all the way to intervening with kids that may have mental health issues. Instructional support, already mentioned the crisis preparedness, diversity and in development and learning. We have a very profound knowledge of what is needed at different stages of development and how we can facilitate developmentally-appropriate challenges so the student move according to where they are supposed to move as they move through the ages and the different developmental challenges presented by the social environment. Family and community collaboration. We also have an important piece of providing counseling and consultation. We only provide counseling to the individuals that are already in the ESE setting, but we also provide preventive group, anger management group, social skill groups, and things, and that's one aspect that we are emphasizing because we believe that if we intervene early, then we can prevent a wide range of problems at the end. So we are beefing up our efforts in trying to provide ranges of services in the preventive side of a process. So that's us, and, you know, really very proud to work with this highly-group of professionals, and appreciate the opportunity you gave me to introduce to our services.
Good evening again, Board. I am here to proudly represent our school counselors. As School Counseling and Assessment, we have the honor and privilege to provide training and support for all of our school counselors. That would include approximately a hundred and five school counselors at all level, elementary to adult ed. School counselors have, even though instructional personnel hold master's degree and state certification in school counseling. One of the differences between school counselors and other Student Services personnel is they are hired by the principal at the school. Although our department provides training and support, they are hired directly by the school principal, and they do adhere to the American School Counselor Association ethics and standards. Who do school counselors serve? Obviously, first and foremost, are students. Currently, our counselor-to-student ratio is approximately one to four hundred and thirteen students. Parents, teachers, counselors serve a vital role in their school's leadership team, and also work collaboratively with the community Student Services personnel and school-based staff. The areas of service, through Ms. Steckman's leadership and the revision of our Marion County Conference of School Counseling Plan, our school counselors address the academic, career, social, personal, multicultural, and global citizenship needs of our students. These are, for lack of a better way of explaining it, the standards for our school counselors, and this is what guides them in the implementation of the school counseling plan to address these needs. And obviously, they also are a liaison to other stakeholders to ensure proper referral services to outside agencies. I would now like to turn it over to Amanda Steckman. Amanda is our Program Specialist for School Counseling, who will get to go over all the fun stuff that, under her leadership, she did with our school counselors last week.
Good evening. Wrapping up with appreciation in action and what that looks like. Oh, I see Dr. Mayer has one of our shirts.
Yes.
That we celebrated School Counseling Week with. So really, appreciation. So it would be no surprise that receiving gratitude, recipients of gratitude, thankfulness, that would be a huge boost to their mood. And so when celebrating School Counseling Appreciation Week, my goal was to show school counselors that we see what they're doing, how they help their students, and we wanted to share it with others. So with that said, we had a daily photo challenge that we sent out every day for our school counselors. So here you see day one, which is just a kickoff, getting them excited for the week. So you can see them holding their signs for National School Counseling Appreciation Week, and some with their students as well. Day two, we asked what they love about being a school counselor, and you can see with the smiling faces of the students surrounding them, it's not hard to see why. Day three, we asked the students how the school counselors helped them reach success, and we heard a variety of responses from our students. For example, helping them create grad plans to be successful after they leave us, helping students manage their anger, and how to deal with that at school and at home. So it was great hearing from the kiddos. Day four, I wish upon a star that. So they could have wished anything, whether it be in practice or for their students or for their school, and not surprisingly, all of their wishes applied to their students and hoping that they would have improvement in their own lives. Day five really was a wrap-up celebration of the week, just sharing with each other, getting excited about school counseling altogether, and again, sharing it out with the district.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions?
No, I just have a statement. I just want to say thank you. You guys work hard, and probably some of the most brilliant people in our system are up here, so I just want to say thank you.
Okay, now, is that the end of the presentation? Because I have something I want to ask Dr. Absher. Is somebody else coming up to us other than her? Is that it? Dr., tell me about the Marion Youth Academy. What is that? Tell me about that one.
That's a residential facility, so the students there are, they're all males. We have forty-four to forty-six students there, round the, you know, twelve months out of the year. They're typically sentenced to stay there. They live there, and they stay there anywhere from six months to a year, average stay being about nine months, and we provide all of their educational needs. They, you know, maintain their classes. student receiving a GED, which, you know, ideally, they would graduate with a high school diploma, but many of our students are not going to do that within the amount of time needed. And so it's our goal to make sure when they leave our facility that they do have certifications, that they've got credentials to move right into the workforce and be successful.
Okay, now, is that located out on 0301?
It's near Pheasanton Elementary.
Yeah, that's straight, that's right out there.
Yes.
Okay, now, how do students get into that program?
They are sent there. They're court-ordered to stay there, so it's not something that we oversee locally. We just oversee the education of those students. So they live there at the facility, and then we provide the education.
Okay, that's a tri-county. Is that tri-county?
It's actually, students come from all over the state. So we have students from Jacksonville and from South Florida. Some of them choose to stay because we do make connections and help them kind of, you know, in that transition period, where others will go back to the, you know, perhaps the place that they came from.
Okay, so how, how is that funded? Do we get FTE for that?
It is funded through FTE, so we collect the, you know, similar to our schools, our school programs, we do, you know, follow the same FTE schedule, or we need to monitor our students' attendance and provide the services for them there.
And the staff is from, is it from our, are they employed by the school system?
Yes, sir.
The Marion County school system?
Yes, they're Marion County School Board employees.
Okay. Let me answer my question. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Anything else? Thank you. You have a very difficult job, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much. Mr. McGowan, please give us your presentation on the 2016-17 graduation, graduation, graduation rate.
Good evening again, Dr. Mayer, Chair McCall, board members, Mr. Gibbs, and Mrs. Flackheder. I am here to present to you the 16-17 graduation rates. Just, if we take a step back, this is actually, was supposed to be presented to you in mid-December when Mr. McHattier, Mr. Whitehouse presented high school acceleration programs. It was going to be embedded in that. At that time, the state had not yet released the graduation rates, so I'm coming back to share this information with you. Just a little background before we get into the numbers. Since 2011, DOE utilizes the federal uniform graduation rate calculation. It is the most stringent of all versions Florida has calculated. It counts only standard diploma recipients and, and those that earn that standard diploma within four years of, of their cohort enrollment. It does not allow for transfers to adult ed programs such as the GED program, and it credits all DJJ students back to the base school. So, for one of those facilities that Dr. Abshur just referenced, if a student is court-ordered to go to one of those facilities, that student data is attributed back to the last base school that they attended in the state of Florida. Just a brief overview of how the graduation rate calculation is formed. For the purpose of last year's rates, all students who entered in the fall survey period of 2013-2014 school year are the, the base cohort. Then any student who enters in over the next four years that also started in the fall of 1314 are added into that cohort. Then you subtract the students that left the school, whether it be to another public school in the district, out of state, private school, home ed, whatever the case may be. They're taken out of that calculation. What you're left with is what's called the adjusted cohort, or the denominator. And so then the graduation rate is simply how many of those students in the adjusted cohort graduated on time within four years. So, before I get started, just to let you know, in your packet, you do have this handout, if that might be a little easier to view, but this is simply a listing of all of our traditional high schools. So our seven base high schools, including Francis Marion. And then at the bottom, you'll see the district and state rates as well. And this is historical back to 1011, when the state converted to the, the new way of the, the calculation. One thing you'll notice right off the bat is from 1516 to 1617, there is a decrease in our graduation rates in five of our high schools. Three high schools did increase, Lakewee High, North Marion High, and Francis Marion Military Academy. One thing I want to point out, because I get a question typically on this, is under the 1516 column for Francis Marion, there's two asterisks there, and that simply references that they were not issued a graduation rate because they did not have 10 or more students. Anytime, whether we're talking graduation rates or school grades, anytime there's less than 10 students in a cohort, DOE does not release that information for the confidentiality of the student that they could be potentially identified. So, that is why there, there's no statistic there. But you will notice that overall, there was a drop in most of our high schools from, you know, 1516 to 1617, and you also see that reflected in the district rate from 81.8 to 78.5, and that's about a 3.3% drop. Over the same two-year span, the state went up approximately 1.5%. So, one thing I want to point out is if you look at our eight high schools, and you were just to take the averages of those eight high schools and average those numbers together, that would come out to 84.1%. So if we look at our eight traditional high schools, 84% graduation rate. So there's two questions I'd like to answer for you tonight. One, if it's 84%, how's our district rate 78.5? That's a 6% difference. So I hope to answer that for you tonight. And then number two is, in general, how did our rates go down? I'd hope to give some rationale or explanation for that as well. So question one is, why is the district average at 78.5 below the average of those traditional high schools at 84%? And the simple answer to that is, in the eyes of the state, any facility in a school district that serves grades nine through 12 students earns a graduation rate. And so it's not just students that attend our traditional high schools, it's every facility in our district. If they serve grades nine through 12 students, they count in our numerator and our denominator for graduation rate purposes. So, you also have a handout of this, which lists every facility in our district, including our base schools. This is just a snapshot for, you know, purposes of the, of the slide. But in essence, what I wanted to show is that there are facilities that count in the numerator and the denominator, whether it be positively or negatively, that aren't typically seen in a traditional high school format. And so, when you add all of those numerators and denominators up, that is how you get the 78.5%. So I just wanted to illustrate that, that that is the difference. And that does make up the 6% because when you look at some of the other sites, for example, Catapult Academy, which I'll talk more about in a minute, 206 students in the cohort and zero graduated. That does not mean that zero students ever graduated. What it means is, is within that four years, they didn't graduate on time, which is the essence of why Catapult Academy was, was serving our district, because those are the students who are not on track to graduate, and they needed an alternative path. So, but they were still considered a school in our district. So those 206 students with zero graduating on time affects our overall district graduation rate. So that is the difference there. So question number two, and, and obviously the most important, is why the decline overall, whether it be our school rates or our overall district rate? One rationale that, that I would provide is Catapult Academy. As you all know, middle of last spring in March is when our district discontinued the use of Catapult Academy as an alternative path for students who were, or not, who were struggling at their base high school and were looking for a, an alternative path to graduation. So that was discontinued in March. So any of those students that those schools would have typically in years past referred to Catapult Academy to continue their education on a more accelerated timeframe, that option was not there. So those students stayed at their base school and resulted in non-graduates. So at the school level, it was a lower graduation rate. I don't have statistics on what that number is, because that would vary by school and the situation of each individual student. But with that option taken away, the reason they would have been referred to Catapult was because they were not on track. So naturally, if that option is gone and they stayed at their base school, then they would count as a non-graduate. The next to last bullet is important. No change to the district graduation rate for under Catapult because of, as I just showed in the previous slide, Catapult is one of our district schools. And so anytime you withdraw from one school and enroll in another school within our district, it still counts on our district graduation rate. And so it will be no different, a student withdrawing from North Marion High and enrolling at Denellin, they're still going to count as our district graduation rate. So while Catapult Academy would impact the individual school's graduation rate, it would not have impacted the district graduation rate because it still counts as a district school. It would have been in our overall district rate. And I put however, and I only say however because if a student would have left their base school to go to Catapult and through the accelerated coursework graduated on time, and I would estimate, we're talking 10 or less students district-wide on a annual basis. So we're one, two students at a school maximum that would leave their base school, go to Catapult, through the accelerated coursework, actually graduate on time. If they were to actually graduate on time within their four years, it would count as a graduate for their base school and for the district. But that would impact our overall rate very minimally, where we're talking about 10 or less students district-wide. So in essence, you know, with, with Catapult, that was discontinued in mid, mid-last spring. It did impact and lower graduation rate at each school site, depending on how many students they would have sent for that option, but not the district rate, as they would have still counted district-wide.
Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you tell me, what were the age of some of those students, Catapult?
I don't have any specific data with me, but I would assume that they were overage students, the majority of them.
Okay. Can, can you give me the number, if you can, percent, the percent of that went to another county in Lake and Citrus? Can you, the percent of those went over there after Catapult?
Yes, ma'am.
When we pulled out and then moved to those other counties? Could you give me that percentage of that?
Program?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the other piece that, that we recognized that impacted our graduation rates was Smart Horizons. Smart Horizons was a parallel path program, and the district has used different companies throughout the years, but it's a parallel path program where the, the student, a senior, stays enrolled in their high school courses, but typically, these are students who are doing everything they're supposed to do, but typically, it comes down to the test. They, they're not able to pass our state assessment. And so this is a safety net program that we utilize in the district that if they were able to pass our state assessment or a concordance score, they would obviously stay with their base school and graduate. If not, they would be withdrawn to Smart Horizons and get their diploma, which was a standard diploma. Last school year in 1617, about 85 students participated district-wide. So on average, about 12 students per school. House Bill 7069 changed that, and we knew that that was coming. We knew that through legislation, it was changing. And basically, what the legislation said was that any school district in the state that had a contractual relationship with a private school, which Smart Horizons is, all of that student data would be attributed back to the, to the base schools, to the, to the district. And so of those 85 students that were unsuccessful, could not graduate at their base school, they were withdrawn to Smart Horizons, finished their education with them, and earned their standard diploma. And, and that did occur, but all 85 of those students were attributed back to the base schools for graduation rate. One thing that I will mention regarding that is, that was at the direction of DOE to manually hand-enter. There's a specific withdrawal code that DOE created for this option. So for districts that have this contractual relationship, we had to manually go in. And for each of the 85 students, my department did go in and hand-enter this withdrawal code so that we accurately reflect that these students were part of that. And I'm not sure what safety, you know, protocols DOE has on the backend to ensure that all districts did that, but it was not an automated process. And I just wanted to mention that because if a district did not do that, these students would have been taken out of their denominator. So that's just important. I'm certainly not saying that that occurred, but I know that we physically had to go in there and do that. And we only had 85 students, so it was not a time-consuming process, but other districts that may have had more licenses, you know, I, I don't know, but I just want to, to point that out. Again, about 12 students per school is what we averaged that were utilizing the program. This, so no matter if the student passed our state assessment, got their base school diploma, or they were withdrawn to Smart Horizons during their diploma, they, if they were withdrawn to Smart Horizons, automatically, they counted against the school graduation rate because, under the old process, they would have been withdrawn to a private school. And as I mentioned in the very first or second slide, a withdrawal to a private school, they're taken out of that denominator. The state, through legislation, automatically puts these students back in. Okay? So those 85, 85 students were added back in to that particular school's graduation rate. It also impacted the district graduation rate, a little different from the way Catapult works. Remember, Catapult is a in-district school. Smart Horizons is not. It's, it's its own private school. And so with those 85 students coming back to us, it not only affects the school, but the district as a whole. This is just a, a simple example, and I just chose Denellin as an example. So the school impact, at a school, both aspects impact the school. Catapult, as I mentioned earlier, because those students would have typically been withdrawn. Now those students are there, still enrolled at the school, and Smart Horizons, even if they were withdrawn to Smart Horizons, that data is coming back to the base school. And I just wanted to illustrate, we talked about 12 students at a school, and it doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when we think about percentages with graduation rates, if we take Denellin High School, their graduation rate for 1617 was 83%. So out of 235 seniors, 195 graduated. If those 12 students that withdrew to Smart Horizons were not attributed back to that school, their denominator would have, be subtracted by 12 to 223, and their graduation rate would be 87%. So 12 students as a whole doesn't sound like a lot, but percentage-wise, that's four percentage points for one school. The district impact, again, only Smart Horizons impacted our district rate. Catapult is an in-district school, it's still counted as our district rate. But Smart Horizons did impact our, our district as well. And the same illustration, if you take our district-wide numbers and you add those 85 students back into our calculation, you go from where we're at at 78.5 to 80.7. So almost to where we were last year. So when we say we dropped 3.3%, about 2.2% of that, we could directly correlate to Smart Horizons. And again, we knew Smart Horizons was coming. We were preparing for that. We had had conversations with secondary ed to think about how we're going to use Smart Horizons in the future. What we did not realize the legislation was going to do was to retroactively impact 1617 graduation rates after everything had already taken place. So that was, you know, a little bit of a shock in terms of the implementation of that. But again, just two main theories that, that we have in regards to why overall our rates declined was because of those two programs. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. McGowan. That, that clears up some questions that I had, so, so thank you very much. Have we, do we have an alternative yet to Catapult? Have we looked at, or are you looking at anything? Or they just stay at their base school?
Yes, ma'am. Just through, and someone else might be able to speak to this better than I can, but through credit recovery and really honing in on those students at the school.
Mr. McHattier, could you help us with that?
Well, one of the things that we've tried to work on, and Dama kind of hit on it earlier when we talked about the GED and those nine students that got the GED, we knew those were a graduation hit, but really, we don't have quote-unquote "replacement" for Catapult, but what Mark Vianello and his department has really tried to do with Marion Technical College is ramp up the GED program and add, like we had talked at a work session earlier, add in that vocational training piece. In the past, we've had students throughout the district, we've had regional places, people have done it at night, we've done GED all over the place, and we've done a great thing in terms of helping those students that can't get help anywhere else. But what Mark and his department have really done is tried to ramp up the vocational opportunities for those students and tie them together so they're actually leading with a skill. What does that mean? That means if we're just looking at pure numbers, if we have more GEDs instead of Catapult, our graduation rate is going to go down. So we're going to have to be better, and as John mentioned earlier, in credit recovery, in working with students from the time they're in sixth, seventh, and Mark's also done a very good job with that in his department, of finding students in interest in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to be able to come in to keep them motivated for graduation, because a lot of those things, and again, and just to touch on Smart Horizons, too, Smart Horizons is something that we've always used, something like for, to help those students even before we were even figuring graduation rates. So it's something through ed options, through Blue Ridge, through groups that have been around, just to help a small number of students that need those things. But we anticipate with the GED program at CTE that we're going to, at Marion Technical College, that we will have, you know, an effect numerically, but that's, we're not worried so much about that. We'll have to be better on other ends because we're trying to do what's best for kids. And, and... CTE that we're going to, at Marion Technical College, that we will have, you know, an effect numerically, but that's, we're not worried so much about that. We'll have to be better on other ends because we're trying to do what's best for kids. And in some cases, young adults.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
And I thank you because I would rather see the students do vocational education, take a GED, instead of sit on Play-Doh trying to pass algebra that they will never maybe possibly pass. Because algebra, they will, I've never used it in my whole entire life. And so it just makes so much more sense. Thank you. I don't, if our graduation rate is harmed by that, I'm happy for the student's success. And the numbers will be on the student's side, maybe not on statistics' side. So thank you.
I think that we're trying to make more productive citizens.
It's about relevance, right, Mr. Vianello?
I don't worry about the graduation rate. If they're getting GEDs, then we're moving along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due no later than 5:40 PM to the school board secretary. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have?
We have several. Desiree Schmidt? Board, this is your handout.
Yes, Board, you do have a handout from Schmidt on the seven habits.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Desiree Schmidt, S-M-I-D-T. I came from the Philippines, and I've been here in America for almost three years. I became a U.S. citizen back in November of 2017, and I am currently a senior at Denellen High School. I have noticed that students are disengaged in the classroom and in life. There are numerous high school dropouts, and some who do manage to graduate are unprepared to live independently and lack basic job skills. Moreover, our society is confronted with challenges unique to this day and age: high suicidal rates, drug abuse, human trafficking, cellphone addiction, bullying, just to name a few. I am here today to present a solution, and that is to empower students and teach them life skills by incorporating The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People by Stephen Covey and Marion County Public Schools. It's true that this book is intended for adults, but there is a teen version of it, and it can even be taught at the elementary level. A book titled The Leader in Me discusses how schools in the United States and all over the world teach the seven habits. Listed in the handout are the results of their efforts and the seven habits in detail. There are over 2,200 schools that include the seven habits as part of their curriculum, and each one has their own way of doing it. Some of the ways are also listed in the handout. Denellen High School used to have what is called Tiger Time, about 30 minutes every block day allocated for academic enriching activities and school assemblies. However, they removed it this year, but if it were reinstated to teach the seven habits, it would be a great use of that time. Besides teaching the seven habits, schools can also have seminars that focus on professional ethics and the prevention of bullying, drug abuse, suicide, et cetera. Now, you might be thinking, why do schools have to teach all these extras? I understand that the goal of the Marion County Public School Board is to develop successful citizens, every student, every day, by providing the best academics possible. However, children and teens will not be able to perform well in school when they have unmet needs and many other issues to deal with. It is expected that parents teach their children important lessons that will help them cope with difficulties in life, but this is no longer happening as homes are more broken than ever. Marion County students need life skills taught supplementary to their academic instruction. Regardless of the student's aspirations, they deserve guidance that will help them maneuver through life. Schools prepare students for their future, but academic proficiency is no longer the driving factor for success in the 21st century. Colleges and employers look for well-rounded people with character, interpersonal, organizational, and teamwork skills. It is important that schools take a holistic approach to learning, and the seven habits is just one way to begin that process. It helps students discover their full potential and prepares them for life's challenges. Parents, teachers, and businesses will be supportive of this endeavor as they will see the product of a competent and respectful future workforce. Change does not come easy, but it is well worth it when it changes everyone's lives for the better. When each person is able to lead their own lives filled with success and happiness, its effects will repose throughout the community. However, it takes the effort of many to start and sustain this change. I ask that you consider this proposal, and thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I'd like to say something.
Ms. Stacy?
When I received a call from Chief McQuaid's wife in Denellen, and she went to the city council meeting, she sat all the way through the Denellen City Council meeting, which I know for a teenager would be so boring, to the end, which nine or 10 o'clock, some ridiculous time, so that she could speak because she felt so strongly about this. After coming to our country for three years and seeing what she felt our country needed, our students needed. It's so interesting coming from the perspective of a student. And obviously, these are great ideas. It's been, it's sold many, many books. It's probably a bestseller in so many, many books. So I called Dr. Mayer and asked her to please get with you and hear your heart. And she actually, I said, I don't know, Heidi, it's seven something. And she said right away, and she goes, and there's actually teen books and Dr. Mayer, of course, our reader, she knew all about the whole thing. So I want to thank you because for a student, you're just a born leader. You know you're a leader when you look around, you see people following you, and I'm behind you right now. Okay? So you are a leader. We're all behind you. So thank you so much. And, you know, the school's lucky to have someone with such leadership skills. It doesn't take very many leaders to make a lot of difference in the city world and our world around us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I am Stephen, I went through the Stephen Covey Seven Habits course. I still try to model my day through Stephen Covey. My husband is actually a certified Stephen Covey trainer, and we know very much how much that works. He had our children between their junior and senior year, that summer, they each had to read the seven habits and write a paper on it. They were not very pleased with that, but I think it has helped their lives. So thank you for your presentation tonight. I would love to see this used in our high schools. So it is a marvelous program that still models my life on a daily basis. So thank you very, very much, young lady. Good luck to you.
Thank you for listening. I really hope that you guys will take action. I really believe that it could make a difference in the students' lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Flotketter?
Ms. Lamardo Hyland?
Hi, good evening. My name is-
Please state your, thank you.
Denny Lamardo Hyland, H-Y-L-L-A-N-D. I'm here today because I have two daughters that go to Fork King Middle School. My 14-year-old came home a few weeks ago and brought to my attention a book that she had came back from the library with. Originally, I was going to try to read it so that you had an idea of what the book had inside of it. But I can't because it would be against school board policy, and it would be against the student code of conduct, using the language that's in the book. So I like to just pass it along. I have the parts tabbed that I'd like you to see.
I'm afraid you'll use your time if you wait on me.
I know. So I would like to read to you what the book is about without using the language in the book. It says, "This book is a brilliantly crafted, shocking account narrated by a teenager of her mother's chronic incompetence and her own sexual abuse. It will slice readers to the bone less for its tragic details than for the casual ingenious tone in which they are revealed." It goes on to say, "Linda, 13, described how after the death of her father, she cared for first one and then two brothers as her mother took up with a succession of men. Her mother found a job at last working for a married businessman named Jack Green who ultimately seduced Linda." The book is about a pedophile who rapes a 13-year-old girl. There's nothing in that book that says to a child, "If you're in this situation, here's a number to call." Tell an adult, here are some resources for you. It ends with the pedophile being killed by the girl's stepfather. The child ends up in child protective custody. I know that the board, Marion County School District, has in place, if you have a problem with a book, there's a board to go to, to review the book. But there has to be a safety net in place prior to a child getting a book with that subject. We want to engage our children. We want to let them know, hey, we want to listen to you. But that's not appropriate. And it's an AR book. So AR says that this is a UG book. It's for upper-grade level. So first of all, the book was in the wrong school. It was in a middle school. That's kind of disturbing to me. So I think that as parents and teachers, we have to work together to make sure the kids don't get this material. Because if they're in the school talking about what's in that book, if you overhear them using the language in that book, they're going to get suspended. It's against the student code of conduct. It's against the Marion County School Board policies. It talks in that book about a girl that wants to murder somebody, and goes through the whole steps of killing a person. Do we really want that in our school? So I think, you know, we come up here and we point fingers, and why don't we send a note home to the parents? When we send home the student code of conduct, send them a note and say, look, you know what? We can't know every book in the library. Pick up the book, look at what your child is reading. It's simple. It really is. Or even develop a curriculum where 11th and 12th graders can read the books. We come up with a list of things that are not appropriate. If they find them, they bring them to the attention of an adult, somebody, of course, with parent permission. It's just not, I mean, that book is disturbing on many levels. And I'm really glad that my daughter brought it to my attention.
Dr. Mayer, would you like to-
Yes. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. You know that I'm a huge reader. You know that I respect the parents' right. I've shared the story so many times that my mother allowed me to read Roots when I was in fifth grade, but that was my parent giving me that choice. I know that Ms. Livinggood has been working with you on that form to work through this process through the board policy. So I hope that you will do that so that we can follow this procedure through. And we are working-
Well, I was told by the principal that the book was being pulled without doing the form.
Okay. Ms. Livinggood has had conversation with you, and I'll ask her to continue that conversation. But to follow board policy, we'd like you to do that, but it's off the shelf right now. But if we could have that conversation, can I call you tomorrow?
Sure.
I would love to have conversation with you, but thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I do, and I do understand about the first-
Yes, ma'am.
Freedom of speech and all that.
Yes, ma'am.
But it has to be age-appropriate.
Well, I think it has to be parent choice as well. And I think that-
Not age-appropriate. It was incorrectly marked.
And I'll agree with that. And also, you're right as a parent to watch over what your child brings home. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And Dr. Mayer, you will be in touch with her-
We will. I know Carolyn will get ahold of her tomorrow.
Ms. Flotketter?
Roger Necton?
Good evening, Marion County School Board members, and Principal of Schools, Meyer. I attended the meeting, last meeting we had here. And the chair, Beth McCall, said just before we just, you folks started discussing about the problems with the school that the superintendent of school wanted to close, she said, "Keep it ethical, be polite." But it wasn't polite. It got to be nasty, maybe a little acidity, or whatever. I have three grandkids that are in Marion County School. On Wednesday evening, one after the other called my wife and said, "You know what they did at the school board? They were cursing on our superintendent of schools?" Now, there was no cursing here, but if I tell you a story, and you tell a story, you know it does get a little pronounced or a little bit twisted. I think the whole school, all school members sooner or later, knew all about this. You undermined the superintendent of schools. You went against what she recommended. You said you didn't know anything, you know, and they blamed, she wasn't communicating with you. You said that the state let yous down. I mean, everything was everybody else but yourself. You guys are the school board members. Aren't you supposed to know what's going on here? You know, we got to get along. And if we don't get along, you can't expect the kids to get along. You made it very difficult for the superintendent of schools, very difficult. And my personal view is, I think those kids should have been moved to other schools and blended in with other kids, leave them by themselves, and have an experiment by having an outside contractor come in. Well, I wish you well. God bless you. And we are lucky here. By the way, if you want to talk about books to read, kids could spend their lifetime reading the Bible. But we're one of the few, where'd that come from? We're one of the few schools that even have a sign like that in the school. You go to Lake County, Sumter County, the word "God" is not allowed. We're lucky, but we're blowing it by not getting along. We have to at least get along. God bless you.
Chris Altobello?
Chris Altobello, 2020 Northeast 43rd Street, Ocala, Florida, A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L-O. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, Board Members. I come before you tonight to ask for your assistance in advocating for our students and our public education system. As you are well aware, the Florida Legislative Session is at its halfway point. And recently, House Bill 5001, the House budget, was overwhelmingly passed in the chamber. I would like to point out that in this budget, charter schools received $70.3 million increase in PICO funding, while neighborhood public schools received no increase in PICO funding. That breaks out to $120 million in PICO funds for charters, while public schools only get $50 million. In case you're wondering what that means per student, that's a difference of $423 per FTE, full-time equivalent, or student, going to our charter schools, but only $20 per FTE, or student, going into our neighborhood public schools. You heard correctly. Our 43,000 children in Marion County are worth less than those children attending charter schools, 20 times less. Now, if the PICO issue isn't bad enough, The Tampa Bay Times reports that the Speaker of the House, Richard Corcoran, has sent a message that if his separate House Bill 7055, Education Trainwreck Bill, doesn't pass, he will hold public school funding hostage. Kind of ironic in that the legislation, there's legislation pending the House to address bullying in our schools. Sadly, our local representatives, Stone and McLean, voted lock, stock, and barrel for the budget, taking their marching orders, I'm sure, from House leadership. I wonder when the last time they toured our schools and looked at the many capital needs we have across the district. across the district. It's just another slap in the face to our public education system in this state. My friend and Jackson County schoolteacher, Dave Galloway, sums up the PICO funding sham best when he says, "This is one reason why I am a union member, to fight the corporate takedown of our public school system. If you're a teacher and this doesn't make you fighting mad, then you're not much of a teacher." Now, I would take it one step further than my good friend Dave. I would say if you're a public school supporter, and this doesn't make you fighting mad, then you're not much of a public school supporter. Thank you.
Mr. Robert Panzer.
Todd Panzer, P-A-N-Z-E-R, 2880 Southeast 31st Street, Ocala, 34471. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, Madam Superintendent, I come to unite as a citizen, a taxpayer, and a parent of a child in the Marion County Public School System. I've also come to hold you accountable. Currently, the board is searching for an entity to run the Evergreen School. A lot was discussed at the last school board meeting, as already has been addressed, and there were some inconsistencies and things that were portrayed as far as matrices and how the school was evaluated, and also in presentation of all of the data was not presented as well. Science was not even represented at all. Twenty-five percent is the lowest portion of the matrices that were used for evaluation of Evergreen. I'm dismayed. School board members whose sole focus is on the school system are unable to research the proper matrices used to evaluate a school. Evergreen was placed in a turnaround, and now it's in a Phase II turnaround. This was documented and filed with the Department of Education. Four of the five current school board members were sitting and aware of this filing when it happened. However, at the last school board meeting, there was a request and was presented. There was shock that there was an email that was provided to the Department of Education that was actually a turnaround plan draft that was provided to the Department of Education as requested for a filing as to what would a plan be for that school. It was not the official plan. However, it was presented as a grandstanding position of, "Look what's being done." There is no place for grandstanding in the education of our children. I repeat, four of the five current school board members were aware and involved with that school and the other failing schools in our system. Where was your concern? Where was your outrage? When the last four to five years, those schools have failed under previous administrations, yet the majority of the school board that sits in front of me was in control at that time. There's now a school board decision to give the curriculum control to an outside entity that is for-profit, not from Florida, and is a charter school system only. There is no proven track record, yet we're asking for highly effective. You want highly effective teachers? Pay them and support them. As the school board, the saying goes, quote, "The buck stops with you." Your decision to pay a for-profit business to run our schools is being watched. There is a referendum, 18-0, that is being placed on the primary ballot August 28th to continue a one-mill ad valorem tax that is to be in place for the next four years. The voters are watching your stewardship of our schools and finances. Please do not jeopardize $16 to $17 million per year for our children because of monies that the voters will lose faith in your ability to govern our school board. What do I mean? Pettiness, divisiveness, gotcha moments, rudeness and ridiculousness. It's available for all to see. Even the Star Banner has written opinion pieces calling out the clearly childish actions of members of this board. The attacks on the current administration appear personal and have no place in a professional atmosphere of officials whose sole purpose and focus should be advocates for the children of this district. You lose voter confidence when you show that your attention is to be of self, not selfless. Referendum 18-02 was passed by the board to be placed in the general election ballot. As a yes or no, should the superintendent of schools be appointed? Discussion by members included that an appointed superintendent would allow for a national search since we're competing nationally, an appointed superintendent would negate the elected superintendent from having to campaign for his or her job, which is noted to be a distraction to the school district by one member who said, quote, "There is no room for politics in schools and classrooms." Another quote was, "An appointed superintendent would be highly qualified." Also, not just a principal who'd been appointed or raised up to become a superintendent. My answer is, we are competing nationally through the leadership and drive of locally elected officials and individuals. After all, aren't you all local? As for campaigning, if that's a concern, then I will be shocked to see any school board member who is campaigning for their job when election time comes around. If it's a distraction for a superintendent, it sure should be a distraction for a school board member who is in charge of the school district. How can a board made up of teachers and principals and business leaders manage a highly qualified superintendent if a principal or a former teacher is not qualified enough to be the superintendent in your eyes? In closing, be good stewards of our school system and our finances. Number two, stop the personal and childish attacks and actions. Number three, do not do anything to jeopardize our one-mill tax ad valorem because of a loss of confidence in a board that lacks focus and unity. Number four, be wise in the Evergreen management decision. Number six, I implore you to work together for the good of our children and find a common ground. I leave you with scripture, Romans 15, verse 1, "Strength is for service, not status." Thank you. God bless you.
Scott Ketter?
What's on?
May I have a motion to approve the revised 2017-18 Recommended Instructional Materials for Adoption of Specified Courses?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James. Seconded by Ms. King.
Instructional materials are adopted according to a process defined in state statute. Eight titles for eight courses are recommended for adoption this evening. And at this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Holly Gerlach, the Director of Elementary Education, to the podium for further explanation. I also want to thank Mrs. Stacy because you provided us with ample time to address questions, and that was appreciated. So, Ms. Gerlach, the work that you and your staff put into addressing those questions is much appreciated. I know that you spent a lot of time. So, thank you.
We are happy to do that. So with that in mind, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent. It is my absolute pleasure to stand before you this evening to go through this, to clarify specifically what is appearing before you as there has been an amendment to this actual vote. So first and foremost, we are the leader in the state as we have elected and adopted Board Policy 4.21 to have autonomy in picking our own instructional materials and veering off the statewide adoption cycle. When we first started down this process last May, May 9th, 2017 officially, when it came into fruition, as we adopted this policy, we know that we wanted to do something different. We created actual committees. Within those committees, we had community members, we had parents, and we had teachers, knowing that there were individuals that served in multiple capacities. When we originally started out this process back in the fall, we actually created what is called an RFR with multiple departments collaborating, working together. So we actually did what is formerly known as a bid process, a request for reply, so RFR. With that, we solicited for 17 courses specifically in the realm of K5 English Language Arts, 612 Social Studies, and 612 Science. Those original committees, based on what we received from those RFRs, meaning the publishers actually sending us their material, as a district review committee, we only looked at the non-negotiables as to, could their materials work with our non-negotiables in terms of technology, data sharing, favored nation pricing? We never once reviewed content as that was the work of the committee members themselves. So upon acting, we put together our committees. Our committees were as well-represented as we could, meaning that we would love to encourage and solicit more participation moving forward. But with that, the actual committees convened on November 27th at Westport High School for those 17 courses, and that is actually what gives us those 11 courses, which we had recommended titles for. And as with anything, there's always going to be diametrically opposed viewpoints on materials, and what does that look like? But that is the work of the committee, and we honor that. Hence, why we had six courses with no recommendations, as they felt those titles did not meet their qualifications to be comprehensive as an instructional material for those courses. So that, those six titles actually have started a simultaneous process. So we actually have multiple processes happening right now. We presented the recommendations from the work of the committee during the work session on December 7th. Then, on January 9th, we held our official public hearing as we are required to do in our actual state adoption, specifically per Florida statute, which we had those 11 recommended titles. With that, if we actually look, and it's actually on this next piece, we come to you tonight with eight titles, and I want to clarify as to why we amended specifically. You will actually see a strike through on three titles. The first one that I want to call attention to is specifically Physical Science. You had the absolute pleasure of hearing from one of our own Marion County Middle School teachers that had grave concerns about this book. So upon hearing that, our wonderful work of our secondary education department listened to those concerns, we actually had personnel that actually went out, sat down with that wonderful teacher, and really listened to the concerns, and it was a substantive concern that this is not in the best interest of our students, and this is not the most appropriate resource to put in front of them. And we take that seriously. That is the exact reason why we have this process, is not only to get the feedback of the actual reviewers themselves, but also to listen to comments warranted through this process. So we thank that wonderful teacher for bringing this to our attention as we, as district, did not evaluate for content. So we applaud her for her collegiality and engaging in academic discourse with us so we could understand what the actual issues with the book were so that we can, once again, start another simultaneous process to ensure that we have materials fit and suited for our students engaging in that specific course for physical science. The other two titles, so Physical Science, you're going to see another Physical Science textbook specifically for high school, it's a high school course, and then you're going to see middle grades for world history. Those two titles, we proactively chose to remove. One of the issues that was brought to the attention is that parent representation. We were very clear from the get-go that we wanted to make sure that we were operating within our legal landscape and that we were following board policy along with Florida statute. And although collectively, we had ambitious attempts to make sure that there was a parent on every single committee, as state statute actually requires parent representation. It does not quantify parent representation, although we wanted to ensure that we were still making best decisions and having that representation on those committees. As those two specifically did not have a parent representative that went all the way through that final process to actually recommend a title and vote. So we chose to amend those two specifically, and those were removed as a result of. Hence why this evening, you are going to see this specific vote officially for eight titles, knowing that the 11 initial recommendations, we have removed those three, and knowing that this is in the best interest. And we look forward to further conversations as we are excited and always open to feedback on how we can better this process and how we can continue to ensure that we are getting the absolute best and most comprehensive materials put in front of our students because they deserve it. So with that, very quickly, I'm just going to go ahead and show you the specific titles that are going to be officially recommended to vote. So we have specifically in K2 and 35, just because those were separate committees, so we wanted to call attention to that. So it's going to be Core Knowledge from Amplify, Middle School Science, specifically Earth Space Science and Life Science, both from HMH. High School Science, the only one that we are recommending for official board vote, is Environmental Science from Cengage Learning. And Middle School Social Studies is going to be US History from HMH as well. High School Social Studies, we have US History and Economics with Financial Literacy, both from HMH. So next steps for these courses, just because we have so many simultaneous processes, we wanted to be very clear on what's happening specifically to these eight titles in regards to these eight courses. So officially, this is our public hearing, and this is official board vote. As soon as pending your board approval, the official 30-day window for formal objections will open. So anybody who does not agree with any of these titles, they will be able to submit a formal objection at which, on March 27th, if there are any formal objections, those will be actually going to the actual hearing committee, which is going to be run by Commissioner Michelle Stone, who will officiate those pieces only specifically to those eight board titles approved by you. And then pending that outcome, then we will once again move forward with the process to actually order materials, and then most importantly, ensuring that we deliver high-quality professional development under the leadership of Ms. Shayna Horn to all of our teachers in a timely manner with stipends over the course of the summer. Questions about specifically the vote for tonight?
Okay. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address revised 2017-2018 Recommended Instructional Materials for Adoption of Specified Courses? Seeing none. Board, is there any discussion?
I would like to say just a very minor thing.
Okay.
I would like to thank the people that worked through this process and the few glitches that we had with some of the people that didn't participate, low teacher participation, that sort of thing. I look forward to the next time we do it. We work a little harder to get those and, you know, to use those because there are districts that are performing fantastic, but obviously have curriculum that's working great for them because they're highly ranked districts. And I would encourage us maybe to kind of peek around some of those corners to see what they're using also on some of these things that we're going to adopt next year to see what does work well. But I've had enough discussions with the district that I know that everything that's new, it's new, and it has its trial period. And I appreciate that you pulled some of the books. They didn't walk through the process the way you had hoped it would walk through, and because haste makes waste. And the children, you could have moved forward, pushing forward, and you chose Holly and your team to stop, regroup, and let's do it later. And so I thank you for that.
All right. All those in favor of the eight textbooks for adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote pass 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Holly and your team. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item C9.1-C20.2 as submitted? Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? If not, all of those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
I am sorry. I messed up the vote on that. Everyone voted in Madison? Okay. I closed it out just before someone voted.
Need to vote again?
I'm taking care of it right now. Okay. I just need to confirm.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Wilson Language Training Corporation? Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Mr. James, Superintendent Mayor. You wish to have a discussion on this?
Ms. Gerlach will address you again to just give you a little background on why this purchase is simply fabulous. So, thank you.
Absolutely. So once again, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. I just wanted to provide some clarification because there are two different pieces that appeared on this board agenda tonight, one of which that was consent. The Consent Agenda item that you just approved was specific requests from individual elementary school sites utilizing their Title I- from individual elementary school sites utilizing their Title I monies to actually purchase student materials. Whereas this one that is being presented to you now by myself, is going to be specific to teacher kits, and a couple different parameters, as we discussed on the January 4th work session, that we had some different issues of ensuring that teachers had the necessary kits to be successful. One example being our ESE teachers, a lot of them handle multi-grade levels, so they needed multiple different kits. So through the work and dedication of my team, we wanted to ensure that we were providing equity in this purchase. So we reached out to every single individual school-based administrator, and we collected information as to what do you need to be successful. I personally phoned, I phoned every single principal to ensure that I spoke to them directly, and ensured that we had what they needed. Furthermore, I just would like to commend the wonderful leadership of Diane Lineenbach over at Oak Cross Elementary. Through her data-driven decision-making, they have decided that they would like to actually extend the Foundations Program into third grade, as they have noticed that this is something that their students desperately needed to remediate some of those reading deficiencies specifically. So you'll also see in their purchasing of third-grade kits. As they are one of our bottom 300 schools, we want to make sure that they receive additional materials to support their specific individual school site's needs. So I just wanted to delineate between those two purchases, so you understand. So, any questions on that for me?
Anybody have any questions? Nope, okay.
Thank you.
Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Mrs. Boynton? Point didn't hit. Thank you.
Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $59,548.82. $32,707 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School, from the Dr. N. H. Jones Elementary PTO. $3,000 to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School, from Lowe's Grant. $1,000 to Fesident Elementary School, from the Fesident School Alumni Association. $4,720 to Forest High School, from Ford Exposure Marketing and Promotion, Inc. $2,500 to Hillcrest School, from their business partner, O'Callaghan County Association of Realtors, via the Public Education Foundation. Classroom needs for teacher Joanne Matthews, valued at $1,453.38 to Lakewood High School, from DonorsChoose.org. $1,000 to Lakewood High School, from the Greater Ocala Dog Club. $1,500 mini-grants to Madison Street Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, from the Walmart Community Grant Facilities, number 1847. $2,500 to Marion Oaks Elementary School, from their business partner, Family Life Church, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,207.16 to Stanton Weersdale Elementary, from the Cornerstone School, Inc. Standing desk with foot fidgets, swivel stools, and ball chairs, valued at $1,932.86 to Stanton Weersdale Elementary School, from DonorsChoose.org. $2,000 to Vanguard High School, from the India Association Cultural Education Center of North Central Florida, Inc. $2,000 to Vanguard High School, from the Vanguard High School Baseball Boosters. 500 sets of Potter the Otter book series, valued at $2,028.42 to Marion County Public Schools Curriculum and Instruction, from the Marion County Hospital District. Motion, please.
So moved.
Summoned by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Are there any discussions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Mrs. King. Whoops, wait a minute, sorry. Rushing. Vote passed 5-0. Mrs. King, would you please do our thank you tonight?
Sure, well, on behalf of the Marion County School Board, we would like to thank everyone who graciously provided donations to our students and our schools, anywhere from monetary to standing desk and swizzle sticks, or fidgets, sorry, not swizzles, but, or did you say swizzle? Fidgets. Anyways, we're very grateful and appreciative, and thank you.
Thank you. The next administrative briefings and work sessions are scheduled for Thursday, February 15th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to have discussion with representatives in the Florida Department of Education regarding Evergreen Elementary School. Thursday, February 22nd, 2018, at 9:00 a.m., the purpose of the work session is to receive updates on construction projects and impact of new initiatives, as well as to discuss testing in schools, I-ready reports, the extended day fee schedule, and the 2018-19 instructional calendar. I will now turn to board concerns, and Ms. Boynton, we will start with you.
Well, we had a good time last week in Tallahassee, alright?
Yes, we did.
I think we worked together, all of us went to our representatives and the senators, and there's some information that, about, well, I get, so somebody would know I gave, so you won't think I'm just giving something the same, different. But we have our legislation, date, the bill packet, as well the budget. So, and I'll just pass this around to Mr. James and Mrs. Stacy, because I know that he was not there, as well as Mrs. Stacy. So, this is the one I sent them around, so I can put it down to make sure that's what they had.
And can I get a copy? I'll get a copy too.
You can, because she'll get it for you, thank you. And the, I think, we all know the, that the budget is differently than we would've thought about, but I want to, I want to thank both the other representatives too, when we came together, I think, and we all had some, we all had one idea. And while the time had one idea, and we all are sitting together, and all the representatives, they listened, and I thought we had a good time. I did have some ideas, but I'm sending it over to the senators, because I thought that, for 706-9, that as Senator, Senator, he has an idea, and so I'm gonna work with that and work with him. As soon as he gives some information, I will send it over to you all about it, what it is about. It's about 706-9, so he can change some different things around in it. So, I think it was a good, good time.
Got it? Mr. James?
Just some things. One of the things, moving around the state a little bit, you have an opportunity to see various things. One of the things that caught my attention that was very, very good. I know we have career nights, and we have things where we meet at the college, out at the college, and we help kids, talk with kids in reference to college. What I noticed, and a lot of them kind of, just so I'm over there quite a bit right now, I noticed at Santa Fe High School, they had something that was really, really unique. And I was looking at the Power Hour that we have, we use sometime at our various schools. They had all, they had a lot of businesses that came and set up booths, and they worked with students that were interested in their profession. And they were, they sat there, they went over how much they would make, they went over those kids, went with those kids and talked with them about how much they would spend for housing and writing checks, and how they could actually, how they were fair in their chosen field. It was really unique in the sense that it provided a kid an opportunity to really look at what type of funding that he would have if he worked in that particular profession, similar to what we have when we have the colleges around, but they had the various businesses that those kids chose, whether it was a plumber, and how much they made an hour, what they would do, how would they spend their money? They would look at how much they spent for housing, how much would they spend for food? If they had two kids, this is what there was. So it gave them an opportunity to look at the business, and why, and actually, they were seniors. The ones that they were looking at were seniors. So that's, that was one of the things that I thought was very impressive out there. And I was hoping that we could get to that point where we start looking at, at some point, utilizing that Power Hour to really give those kids an opportunity to work with businesses, come in, set up booths, and say, send the kids over there that's interested in being a nurse or whatever, and this is how much they make as a nurse, this is what you do. And they even had to write checks for things like that, so it gave them an opportunity to do that.
It's a great idea.
Okay, I'd love to see that. And it was sort of like, they were going from one school to the next school, to the next school, and those business people really got involved in showing those kids what it would take in order for them to make a living at their chosen field. The next thing I must, I ask this school board now, and this is where I am with something. I know how I talk with the school board in terms of getting a work, putting on the work, on our work session, when we're gonna look at, bring in an architect, and look at what we're doing over there. I feel very strongly that we need to move that to the front of the list, and I'll tell you why. When I look at what we're doing here, I know that we are splitting apart, so we need to know that. And a young man, whoever was in the back, he can see things, I can see things. We're splitting apart, and I will say this, we need to move that to the front of the agenda. Because when I look at what we're doing, I'm looking at an administrative office over there for us right now. The school board is over here. And what I want us to look at, either we go together, or we split up, and let's call it the way it is. When I look at the school board, all of us, if we chose to stay here, all of us would have offices, we could have offices in this building. We could simply have offices in this building. Okay, when I look at the fact that we need a secretary, okay, a secretary, we can look at the fact that our attorney could come to this place, and we have a complete thing. Let me tell you the reason why. We need to have some control over what we're doing. And I will tell you why I'm saying this. I met the new person that's replacing Brenda tonight. Some of you may have met her prior to that, but I didn't. All I'm looking for, if we have no control of that person, we really don't have any say-so about what we got. Because when I look at a person that's coming in, and she may be the best person in the world, I don't know that, but I want to know if she's gonna be working this closely with us, because Brenda worked really close with us. Okay, if she's gonna be working this close with it, I want to look, I want to know all the people that was interviewed. Do I have any, did I have any problems with any of them? See, to me, this person was put in front of, was put here tonight, and said, this is your job. It's not fair to her, it's not fair to somebody out there that may have wanted to get a shot at this job. It was not fair to me. And it reminded me of some things that happen to principals, where, schools where principals show up, and they have to take it. But school board, people should not be able to just walk in and hand us somebody and say, this is who you got. And I'm having a hard time sitting here and not saying anything, because I know it destroyed the morale of people that could've applied for a job. They think they have no, they'll say so in what is occurring. So, board, I'm asking the board, let's really look at whether we want to do this. Because I'm telling you, anytime that you get somebody that you don't have, not even a say-so, or even an acknowledgement, things happen. I understand that. But by the same token, as a board, we should've said, hey, these are the people that we've looked at, this is my choice. As a husband, my wife is really sick. But let me tell you something. If I bought somebody in that house and didn't tell her about it, she would raise holy hell. And I know I wasn't supposed to say that, she's gonna get on me about that. But you know, and I know, you bring somebody in there, and then say, Bobby, this is the person that we looked at, and blah, blah, blah. So I have, I have a concern that we're giving up that. Let me tell you another little thing, and I get off my little high horse. I feel very fortunate that I had the opportunity to work with Brenda and Ann for the time they've been here. I feel very comfortable when I walk in this office, and I have some personal information that I have, they had to have done. I know that it would be taken care of. The question would ask, giving you an example. I explained to Brenda that my wife was ill. And then she said, okay, you're gonna be late to some meeting. And then she said, Mr. James, do you want me to pass this on to the board? This is what we're looking for. I have nothing against anybody, I'm just telling you, board, when you don't have that confidentiality, and you don't have an input into what's going on, then you got a problem. And I don't want to have a mistrust here, because I was not informed in it. That's my two cents. And I'm looking for that work session, let's discuss this stuff. And I think it need to be moved to the front of the agenda, because the staffing plan is coming up, and we can put some things in the staffing plan if this does not work, because we have to decide, are we gonna be there and just anybody that show up, or do we have some control of what's going on? And I think the school board, at some point, have to stand up and say, wait a minute. I want the SAC committees at these schools to be informed when we move people. I want the SAC committee to be involved in the decision-making, because they are stakeholders. Thank you.
So, Mr. James, I understand when you're talking about the architect and getting the outside consultant, or you're talking about the facilities, is that what you want us to move to the front?
Yes. We need to move to the front of this thing, because what I'm hearing is that administration building, and we dubbed it District Office East, and I know that came up for a vote yet, on the naming of it. But the administration is over there, the school board is over here. We got, we had two people working directly with the school board. I walked in tonight, and I met a new one. And I'm sure y'all have met her prior to that, if you came down here, I'm sure. That's what my concern is. If we're gonna do this, let's move, let's do it. Let's get out here and discuss it, and make sure these things don't happen to us, where we sit here and just take what come in the door. That's what I have.
Ms. Stacy?
Okay. Before I speak about my concern, I had something I did want to say, but I want to dovetail off of what he just said. Since we don't get to talk to each other, except here, and it's a long time since we've seen each other. Mr. James, we can actually, with two-thirds of the majority of the vote of the board, we could either, we could amend the staffing plan right now to put, to move the organizational plan, the organizational chart, we could move that position of the school board secretary underneath the school board by making a move, and we could amend the staffing plan right now. The school board is in charge of the organizational chart for all districts. That is our responsibility. We just, you know, we had people talking to us about us not doing our job, and we haven't been doing our job. We've allowed, we have delegated our, because our stuff, and I've been saying that for years, we delegate to the superintendent, and then we fuss when the superintendent doesn't do it the way we want it done, but we shouldn't have delegated it to them in the first place. That was our responsibility. So when we delegate to the superintendent to do these things, and then she doesn't do what we like, then we get all upset. So, I'm willing to make a motion, right now, that we hold a vote. And Mr. Gibbs, please stop me if I'm not doing, if I'm saying something wrong, because I understand parliamentary procedure, that we amend the 17-18 staffing plan right now, and amend it to put the school board secretary, move it under the organizational chart to be under the school board, where right now, we just have the school board attorney. We can slide it over to where the school board secretary answers to the chair, and that can be done. You know, I'll make a motion that we amend the plan.
Before you do that, my whole point in bringing this up is I want discussion. I don't want it to come up tonight, because we're doing, this thing is moving so fast, and I know that we need to have more discussion.
Okay, I agree, I agree. I agree, it's just that if you wanted to do it, we can do it tonight.
Okay, I can't say what I want to do, all I know is I got a problem here. And I'm... And I hope all of you feel the same way I do, in reference to the fact that I want people to understand, you just don't do that. It's not nice, it's not professional to me for me to walk in here and somebody hand me a paper and say I'm the new person. I want to discuss it and see what is the best fit for the school district. Now, if they come in here and they have us a blueprint where all of us can go over there, and then we can decide what we want to do with this building. But I'm going to tell you right now, I know if you go down to the Orange County thing, every one of those school board members got an office. Did y'all know that? They did. And when I think in terms of that, they got the attorney, and they got various people in one place. If the superintendent want to take all the people over there, put them up, fine. We need to discuss it at a work session to make sure we cover what we need to cover.
Okay, I will move, I will move the, we'll move that to discussion, where I know, I think I know what you want. So we had talked about hiring an outside consultant to come over and to help us look at all the facilities and look at MTI, and so, and it is on a work session, but we'll see if we can.
Well, you need to come to the front, because people are changing people around here, and it's time for people to go to, to be rehired and all of that. Mr. Gibbs, I'm saying this because you got two cents in there too, and I just know at a work session, you may have a chance to speak. That's my point.
And also, one thing I was going to start saying, one word, accountability, and we all have to be accountable. So, and thank you, and I thank you, Mr. James, for giving the information.
Go ahead, Ms. Stacy.
Okay, and now I want to talk about my concerns. You know, people came and talked about some of the decisions we made last board meeting, and four of our board members, they're right, four of us have been here, the superintendent's fairly new, Ms. McCall's new, and so we know things that possibly, we have a history that made four, if four board members are all on the same page, obviously there's some history that we have together, that we feel that we moved in the right direction on Evergreen, or we wouldn't have done it to get four board members. And in fact, all the board members that were here in the past. We, I don't want to go over what we didn't do on the turnaround plan, we had a turnaround plan, it was a district turnaround plan, there were so many, and I pointed out on television what we didn't do, and what we didn't follow through on, what we didn't do, and that's all history, anybody can go back and watch it without me saying it, but my problem is that the DOE was supposed to be monitoring this. And so my question is more to the DOE, what were you monitoring? Because that what is properly monitored will improve. So obviously, there was some monitoring, it didn't improve, so there was some monitoring that wasn't happening. And the school board, had we known that the DOE wasn't monitoring what was happening here, the school board has the power to hire an auditor.
Stacy, can I just say, we have a work session with the DOE on Thursday, so perhaps, but perhaps those discussion questions need to come up at that time.
But we have the power to hire an auditor if we want an auditor, if we feel that it's not properly covered. So, you know, we did what we did, we're comfortable with it, and we have some, and on a positive note, we have some great things happening over at New Zion Missionary Baptist Church. I've been at both of the tutoring sessions, and my husband was at the last one, and he was, he's still, after, since Saturday, he's talking about that Forest High teacher that came over and was helping with the students with ELA. He said, I learned stuff about ELA that I didn't know, and I'm a college graduate, and he said, I just can't believe how she could make it all so easy to understand. And she said that she heard about, she's volunteering, she's not being paid a penny, and she said, I just heard about the school, I felt like I could help, and I'm coming over to help. And then we have another teacher, I think from Stanton Weersdale, who's coming in, and she's helping, and it's fantastic, and I could never even mention all the people that were there to help. And the good thing about all of this is that I believe it woke up a sleeping giant. We have people in the community now that know, they have permission to be leaders and take control of some problems that maybe only they can help solve. And so possibly this will spread and get some other people excited about it, and become something that's great for this community with all of the volunteer work. And I'd like to thank Dr. Mayor, she and I have worked tirelessly this week together as we have been putting our list together to, she's going to help bus the students over there, we've been working tirelessly together every day, right, Dr. Mayor?
Pretty much, ma'am.
And we have a plan, and so we're working on our plan as it's unfolding. The plan, kind of like, it's kind of like the book approval plan. The plan wasn't perfect at first, but it's getting more perfect each day. So therefore, we've gone through the imperfections of it, and we're trying to perfect it, and I think we made some more progress today on that. So I'm excited that I've got the support of the district to help us get the kids in here to the school, and offer the parents, I will be calling each parent personally over the next few days, and I know Dr. Mayor, she's got her plan with a Sky Alert or something, that she's going to be contacting parents.
Yeah, I'm going to share that.
Oh, okay, I won't, okay, I won't bust your bubble, I'll just say what I'm going to do.
That's good, though.
And I am going to be calling each parent individually myself and personally inviting them. So we have a plan, and we're on the same page, and that's great to be getting on the same page with that school, so I guess Kelly, you're next.
Representative Hovis Watson, I have a card, he wants to, you know.
He wants to come? Okay.
Deal with you too.
All right, have him get in touch with me.
Okay. All right. Well, it's been a few weeks since we've been here, and I would like to personally thank, or not thank, but congratulate Ms. Helen Hoteling, our Golden Apple Teacher of the Year. She is a wonderful teacher, and when she was giving her speech, she said that, to the world, you may just be one person, but to one person, you're the world. And she happened to be a teacher to my world, who is my daughter, who has been a very successful student, and she will be graduating this May from USF, and it was just a really nice thing. So today I asked Ali, I was like, well, what do you remember about Ms. Hoteling? Because she was a kindergarten teacher. She goes, I remember she was very kind, and she always read us Amelia Bedelia books, but she made an impression on her. And I know Ms. Hoteling said, you know, she hopes she doesn't, that her students don't always remember that all she did was test them, or whatever, and I just wanted, I didn't have a chance to tell her then, but I will tell her now that my daughter doesn't remember the testing. So that, I also want to thank our local legislators, as some of the board members, we went to Tallahassee last week, and they took time out of their busy schedules to listen to our concerns for Marion County students, and we're very appreciative of that and hope that, you know, they listen, and when they, it does come time to vote, that they will remember what we had discussed. And also, I know you did a little bit about it, I also want to report that the Evergreen Tutor Me program has started, and I did attend last week, and what I was seeing were engaged students that were learning academics if they needed them, they were learning math using manipulatives, they were being taught test-taking strategies, and while they were doing it, they were having fun. And so I just want to give that, a report of what I observed and saw. And I do want to thank, there were many, there were community leaders in there, there were teachers in there, there were volunteers that were taking time from, you know, their day to work with our most precious prized positions, and those are our students. And I just want to thank them and report to you guys what I had observed last Saturday.
A lot of good has come from all of this. Dr. Mayor?
Thank you. It feels like we haven't seen each other for so long, so I had to make a list tonight of what to share with you, all the great things that are happening. First Officer Barry, thanks for being here tonight, we appreciate it, and I hope all has been well with you, and it's always good to see you. So thanks for being here tonight. I want to reassure the board and the mom who spoke earlier, that I will be calling her tomorrow. I, you know, I am an avid reader, and in my world, as a mom, it's my choice what my child is exposed to. I hear her and I respect her, so I need you all to know that we will be in contact with her, and we will go through board policy on that. When Ms. Gerlach was up here, and she mentioned the curriculum review process, and she mentioned her team and what they did to help with that, and she mentioned Ms. Renfro had gone out to speak to that teacher, Ms. Renfro then spent hours going through the standards herself. So I wanted to let you all know the work that Ms. Renfro put into looking through the standards to address that teacher's concerns, and Ms. Renfro had found some even further issues than what that teacher had presented, so I wanted to thank her. In regards to what Mr. James said earlier, I would like to refer you all back to statute, to remind you that I am the board secretary. In statute, I am the board secretary, and these ladies work for me, and that your employee is Mr. Gibbs. And I think we had this issue too, a few years ago, when Mrs. Stacy brought up that very valid position of the family school liaison person, and she wanted that position to report to the board, and she was informed that the only position that the board has is the attorney. So I just.
They were not correct.
Well, I just want to remind you that in statute, I am the secretary. I sign all documents as the secretary, and that these are my employees, and that in statute, that it is my responsibility to hire employees, but I again want to assure you all that there is no closet de narnia here in the district office, that people just don't disappear. So I just want to reassure everybody. Moving forward, I am so excited to share that with our child abuse training, that we have had three thousand seven hundred and three employees complete that training. And while you talk in a sidebar right now, I think it was convenient that you all were on the same message this evening. So there were three thousand seven hundred and three employees, one thousand nine hundred eighty-nine certified personnel have completed it. We've opened lab days for those without computer access, so they can complete this mandatory training. And again, as you say, our most precious commodities, and if our students are not safe, nothing else matters. Moving forward, we're also going to be, under the guidance of Ms. Horn, a sexual harassment training, so we're putting that together as well, and so that we are proactive in that. So know that that is being designed right now, she's working with Ms. Oliver's office. Last week, we had a visit from FEMA, I know that was a concern to all of you, so FEMA was here, and they did a tour under Ms. Lively's guidance, and she said that things are progressing. So the board had approved that outside consultant to come in that has been working with other districts, so thank you very much for doing that, because it's paying off. This Wednesday and Thursday, Ms. Gerlach and Mr. McGowan are having, and Mr. McAtier are having data chats with our principals, they're voluntary administrator data chats, where they can come in and go through the data and with Ms. Sandy's group, so that is another fabulous opportunity. Over Memorial Day weekend, the Vietnam Traveling Wall is going to be here, that is a huge honor for us, and our curriculum department is working very closely with our veteran services. Ms. Barber, who is our program specialist for social studies, Ms. Crowder, who is our program specialist in the arts, and Ms. McGuire, they're all working together so that our students are able to be showcased during this event. So we will be working this into our curriculum maps, into the curriculum. Ms. Crowder is working with our arts, our choruses, our bands, so that they can be there as well, as well as artwork that will provide a barrier. This is significant, because where this traveling wall stands is considered hallow ground. And so there must be a barrier between the wall and any place where there may be an event, and you know, there'll be lots of events happening with veterans gathering there, so we have to have a barrier. So under Ms. Crowder's guidance, we will have artwork that will be the barrier. So our students will, yeah, it's really, I get a little emotional about it. And you know, there are forty-four Marion County residents who are represented on that wall, so we will be reaching out to those families to include them in what we do. This is huge for us to have this, and we're very proud. With that, April fourteenth, at the Veterans Quarterly Memorial, our school district personnel will be reading the names of those veterans who have passed. This is the first time that we have ever been involved at that level, usually we just attend and honor those names that are being read, but this time we are going to read them, that's huge. The Florida Department of Education, the early learning standards for children birth through age five, starting kindergarten, they are now, the new early learning standards are posted for role development, and they'll be available on the web next week. An educator guide will be available this spring, and I just wanted to let you know that I am honored to have, again, been on the panel of experts, one of the writing committee for the, sorry Brenda, one of the writing committee for our early learning standards, and that was a joy to work with these people. Moving back, Friday, February second, was our Big Springs Regional STEM Fair Award Ceremony, and this year it was under the guidance of our program specialist, Tia Brown, who did a fabulous job. She was helped by the entire department, they all stepped up to help her. This was a coordinated effort with Marion Sumter and Levy County, they all sent students, but we, again, were responsible for the organization of the fair, and it was very well done. So we wanted to thank her. February third was a professional development boot camp for grades three through five, so these teachers came for professional development that day. Ms. Horn organized that, and these teachers were provided stipends. The K-2 teachers have been asking for the same thing, and their boot camp will be April fourteenth, and again, they will have stipends. Ms. Steckman acknowledged that February fifth to the ninth was School Counseling Appreciation Week, she did a great job with all the tweets and all of that recognition. Tuesday, February seventh, was the Black History Open House and Presentation, and Dr. Butler and Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell from Silver River, Dr. Butler from Title One, again, a fabulous coordinated effort where we are going to really expand and give honor to the artifacts from Howard Academy and the museum, and Mr. James was the guest speaker, and it was awesome to be there in the actual school that you went to, and to be there and to hear your recollection of that event. So please be looking for more happening there. We have a grant, a federal grant, and to enhance the museum, so that is all in process. Last Saturday, February tenth, we had clinical educator training, we're revising that training for our teachers who take on student teachers and who are also mentors for first-year teachers. And so the depth of that training is huge, and these fourteen people who were selected from certain schools, they will be part of the process to refine it before we roll it out to all the teachers next school year. So they are helping to design this and make sure it's to the depth that we need, because we want to not only mentor and support pre-service teachers and first-year teachers, but also to give acknowledgement to these master teachers, I call them, and to keep them in the classroom where they are honing their skills, mentoring and touching the lives of these children directly. We also had STEAM leadership training last Saturday, and that was for our STEAM schools and those lead teachers in those schools. And then also, last Saturday, was the Howard Middle School Dance, and I know you all got the call, where there was a note written in the bathroom at Howard Middle School, and there was that potential, where the student, we think it was a student, said that there may be a bomb threat there, or whatever. We did a very thorough sweep of that school. We had an SRO there that night, we had an extra OPD there that night, extra Howard Middle School faculty were there, and I went just to say hi to those parents and to thank them for trusting us, and they all said that they felt fine and that they appreciated the phone call. I know we had had conversation about whether or not to call when we're hearing these things, and we have just come to the decision, we're going to call. And whenever we hear things on social media, because the parents just want to know that we're aware and what we're doing to make sure that the school is safe, so we'll be letting families know that. This Thursday is our district spelling bee for our middle school students. This Friday is our first-ever history fair that we are doing, and it's modeled after our science fair, so it will be the same type of program, but you know our emphasis on history and the significance of it. So Ms. Barber, our program specialist under Mr. McAtier's direction, she has put together this history fair, we have judges who will be there on Friday as well, and we hope that you can attend, but we are very proud to be part of this. Then also, this Friday, you heard from our kids in the Southeastern Youth Fair, and I wanted to just say thank you. I wanted to just say thank you to Mackenzie Ott, who's a fifth grade student at 8th Street, and Riley Ann Tuck. She is a fifth grader at Donellen Elementary and they wrote me letters asking me to attend and I just, I wrote them back and said, "Absolutely, I would love to do that." We got a program earlier today, but I've had my program and I've already flagged all the events that I'm gonna attend. It's gonna be a, a great evening. And just to finish this evening, I wanted to know if any of you had seen the movie Darkest Hour? The one about Winston Churchill? Did you go? Did you see it? Oh my gosh, wasn't it just fabulous? So Jack and I saw this movie over the holiday and then, of course, there's a book, but the book came out after the movie, but the darkest hour. And this movie is about Winston Churchill and his, what he was going through as prime minister, newly elected prime minister, when the eve of World War II and everything that's happening in Europe. And then it comes Dunkirk where he has, the British troops are stranded at Dunkirk and he has to make a monumental decision on what to do and how to protect his people. And this movie is up for an Academy Award, well deserved. It's one of the most fabulous movies ever and I did embarrass Jack, I have to tell you, because at the end when he's giving his, his famous speech, I was reciting the speech along with him and it just so happened to the left of me was sitting Mr. and Mrs. Yancey and so they were kind of laughing as I'm, I'm sitting there reciting the speech. But Winston Churchill is one of my heroes because that man stood alone when there was nobody else. And his speech that is commonly referred to as the "We Shall Fight on the Beaches" speech is so significant, especially for where we find ourselves right now. And the end of his speech, he says, "We shall not flag or fail. We shall go on to the end. We shall fight in France. We shall fight on the seas and oceans. We shall fight with growing confidence and growing strength in the air. We shall defend our island, whatever the cost may be. We shall fight on the beaches. We shall fight on the landing grounds. We shall fight in the fields, in the streets. We shall fight in the hills. We shall never surrender." Now that's commonly where the speech is stopped, when you listen to it, but he continued with something very significant because he says, "And even if, which I do not for a moment believe this island or a large part of it were subjugated and starving, then our empire beyond the seas, armed and guarded by the British fleet, would carry on the struggle until, in God's good time, the new world with all its power and might steps forth to rescue and the liberation of the old." And I just think that those words are so powerful and a reminder that might for right and not might is right. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to recognize Board's Attorney Paul Gibbs.
Good evening. Board, on behalf of Attorney David Lennox with Greenspoon Martyr, PA, I am notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation styled City of Ocala versus School Board of Marion County pursuant to 286.011-8 Florida statute known as the Government and the Sunshine Act. I am requesting a session with the board for the purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategy related to this matter. I will ask the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice at the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that the session be held following another attorney-client session that is scheduled at the end of February 22nd, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session which begins at 9:00 AM. As required by this statute, only the following individuals will be present. Beth McCall, Chair, Angie Boynton, Vice Chair, Kelly King, School Board Member, Bobby James, School Board Member, Nancy Stacy, School Board Member, Dr. Heidi Mayer, School Superintendent, Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney, David Lennox, Attorney. I will ask a court reporter to record the session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client client session pursuant to Section 286.011-8 Florida statutes to discuss pending litigation.
If there are no objections, I will instruct our attorney to schedule a second attorney-client session to be held following the February 22nd, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session scheduled for 9:00 AM. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January 26th, 2018. Mrs. Flott Catterer, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, ma'am.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-18-02 without educational services for the remainder of 2017-2018 school year?
Second.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD-18-31, JD-18-39, JD-18-40, JD-18-41, JD-18-42E, JD-18-43E, and JD-18-44E with educational services through the remainder of the 2017-18 school year and the first semester of the 2018-19 school year. Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting. We do have a Mr. Adams who has requested to address the board once the televised portion is over.
So you take a brief recess.
Okay. Beth, before we take that brief recess, I, I want to ask Mr. Gibbs if he would research the question in reference to school board secretary that was presented and if you can get it and send it to us because I, I think we need to clean that up.
It's a corporate secretary. Are you recessing?
Just, yes, till we're off the air.